All right, welcome everybody to the 5pm work session for the city council. All council members are present. Out of breath from climbing stairs. We had a nice little tour of the municipal building and all right, so first up on our agenda is just to read. Oh, are we good? We're good. Okay. First off, we have just a review of the agenda tonight for city council meeting and the special RDA meeting. So we've got some minutes, council member Myers, council member Traburka to approve. Hopefully you've had a chance to review those. We have a public hearing on the citizen participation plan for the 2025 to 2035 year consolidated plan. And then we have planning commission, planning item for the proposed zone text amendments limiting multifamily dwellings. Not a public hearing, but we'll take, we will receive public input on that. Any comments or questions or discussion on those items? All right, after that, we will go. I will go into our special redevelopment agency where some minutes for board member Blair. Hopefully you've had a chance to review those. And then consideration of a journey into a closed session. And that is our evening meeting. Okay, first up, we've got Justin Anderson here to talk about the proposed interlocal agreement. The landfill post closure care permit. So, welcome.
And Taylor. Yeah, Taylor's gonna join me too. To Richie, members of the council, thank you for giving me time to be able to come and discuss what this is. So this goes back to the molding site. Which was just west of the, what we'd call the 21st Street Pond. Back in 2008, Randy Molding actually deeded about eighty percent of that landfill to Ogden City and about twenty percent of that landfill to West Haven. And that was done. And so at that time, he also in a way, that's what it was. Now, it was a clean, it was like a construction and debris type landfill. So it didn't allow just for anything to go in it. So it wasn't just like a, like a transfer station of anything. And at that time, so then that was provided to Ogden City and to West Haven. At that time, he did a closure plan and submitted that to the state.
Was it just the respective parts in the respective cities that we got?
Yes, yes.
Most of that was in Marius Sladeville.
No, in fact, none of that was actually in Marius Sladeville, but twenty percent of that is in West Haven. And then the remainder is in Ogden City. So the majority, and if you think of a landmass size, that puts about about little over forty-one acres into Ogden City and just under ten acres into West Haven.
So where they're doing the transfer now, is that in Ogden City or is that in?
That, that is, that is in Ogden. Yeah, and that, and where they're doing it now is not actually any of the property that we're discussing. So that, that's still in Molding's ownership.
Okay, thanks.
So yeah, you bet. And so, long story short, in going through this closure plan and he capped it like the, the plan called out and did everything, reseeded it. Everything was done in accordance to that. However, because the property was deeded over to Ogden City and to West Haven City. Part of that has some requirements that the city should be doing as the landowners as part of that. And that had not been, that just wasn't being done. And so about a year ago, the state DEQ, particularly the office of Wimric or Waste Management Radiation Control contacted Ogden City and, and West Haven sent Leonard's out and said, hey, we need to get into compliance with and get the paperwork corrected and up to date. And so that's what we've been working on for about six, eight months. And so one of the things that they required is the state didn't want to deal with two entities because it was one site, they wanted to deal with one entity, which, which I understood. And they said, well, since Ogden is about eighty percent of the site would, you know, recommend that we deal with Ogden. And we were, we were agreeable to that. However, one of the things that we're doing is we did an interlocal agreement with West Haven. And the reason we did that is part of this is that there are some costs associated with, with this. Meaning there needs to be some site inspection quarterly. There's an annual report and some other things. Most things can be done. And the costs associated with that can be done in-house. We just didn't want to be responsible if there was erosion or other things that took place on this site. We didn't want to be held responsible for where it was owned in West Haven. And that's why we're doing the interlocal agreement, which is to protect Ogden City. If there's something in West Haven and really for West Haven to protect against if we let something slip from Ogden City, not that we plan on doing that. So this agreement essentially is, is to finalize the application with the post-care and to do an interlocal agreement with West Haven. Now, this is a requirement. Typically, these can go up to thirty years on the post-care. However, the state does recognize that this was really started in 2008. And so we, once we get this in place, we're going to be looking and actually we've already told the state. We're going to turn around and file a year afterwards to get post-termina, the post-care into a termination classification. So that we will, we will get past all the, all the requirements. So that's, that's really what this is. And I believe you were sent the transmittal along with the interlocal agreement and also the post-closure plan.
Any questions or discussion on that?
I, I reviewed this and it looks good to me. We definitely depend on you, Justin, to make sure that you're covering bases for us. But my question is, what is the value of that land? They've mounted that up so high. And I, you know, for Ogden City, is there a value to it? Is it something that can be developed in the future?
So that, that is actually a great question. And that is actually something, I don't have necessarily a value that we put on it. However, as part of this plan, we had to go through and identify anything in the future that we may or use this property for. And so on page 10 of the post closure plan, particularly table four, we identified different use types and gave a description for everything else could be in. Once, you know, some of that is recreational and green space for public use. Some of it was municipal use. And another type was specialized structures and facilities. And we described in there everything that could possibly be, be used for that. That could range from putting in a cell tower or communication towers, or we could do wind or solar turbines possibly. So we did trails or walking path or cycling path. Like we tried to cover all of our bases. And so if you go read through that description, we, we have identified everything that we could think of in the future so that we could get it in here so that we didn't have to go and reopen this permit. Once, once they close it, they want it closed and they want you to follow it.
Is zip lines across the lake an option?
We didn't, we actually didn't put in a zip line across the lake, but that could be count for a structure. If we had to put a structure there for it. That, that we included those.
Can we vote on an amendment to add that? Any other questions, Richie?
Yeah, when they, when they cap to that, when they finished with that, did they cap it like the, the regular landfill is done with clay cap or?
Yes, they, they did that. And in that, it actually describes exactly in that post-care plan what they had to do. And so they had to do it in a specific layer and, and a thickness of what the material was.
So since it's just C and D, it probably has no methane value or anything like that.
Well, we don't, I don't know for sure. However, that was one of the things that we did include as far as a potential use. We put an evaluation of potential project with like a QIT for methane mitigation. Uenergy, yep. And so that was included as a potential use, though we, we didn't know for sure.
That was one of my questions. We had a presentation by Q Energy at the WACOG and they talked about that process and, and specifically, you know, landfills are great for that apparently. So.
So yeah, we, we did include that, not knowing for sure.
I have a question about the use of the land where it sounds like about an eighty, twenty with Ogden City and West Haven is, we all have to agree on what we do or how does that?
Not necessarily.
Agreement give those powers.
We, we do while it still is in closure care. Once we go to a termination and we get approval through the director of the DEQ from the state on termination, it does allow us to do different things. However, it has to be within the uses we identified on that table. And so we, we collaborated with West Haven and, and went through everything with them. And they are agreeable to what we have put in this post closure care.
One, one other question I had, if, and I have to admit that I wasn't very diligent in reading through every word of this report.
This hundred and like fifty-five page report.
But, but in, in years past, when we had kind of talked about that, where, where it does have, you know, the east end of it's so close to proximity of the lake, they were kind of talking about having an entertainment area. Or that was kind of an amphitheater, you know, raised up stadium seating kind of thing. Is that in your list of?
Yes, it is. In fact, I will read it to you what we have for that. I'm probably have to put on my glasses here. So in the uses, and this is, I'll, I'll read the recreational and green space for public use. This site could be used for recreational and green spaces, including a bike park, playground, frisbee golf course, community garden or greenhouses, dog park, wildlife habitats, picnic area, sledding hill for seasonal winter activities, an amphitheater or other type of event space. Potential uses also include a nature park with hiking, walking or cycling paths, additional tree plantings and other vegetation to support local biodiversity. Shade structures may be installed to provide comfort and relaxation areas for visitors. The, and the trails surrounding the property, including pavilions and walking bridges, may undergo improvements and modifications over time. And that was just on the recreational green space. So we feel like that's covered.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Like, there was one thing that just kind of jumped out to me and, and just the interlocal agreement, I think calls for the financial assurances for, lists a couple of ideas there. Excavation, water proofing and remedial measures. Do we have any expectations that there's potential future problems that, you know, we might not be?
So.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Are we not aware of any things we might not be aware of?
What are the risks? I think is what you're at. What are those risks? And so the, right now, the risks are really, is something going to happen to the cap? The cap has been on there for, um, not quite twenty years, but getting closer to twenty years. And so is there erosion or some other type of things that are going on? There has been inspections, even though they haven't been done to the requirements that the state would like over time. And every inspection that they have done, including up until the one this last year, the cap itself has been maintained and it's been properly vegetated. And so there hasn't been anything that the state has come out and seen that has said that they've come back and said, there's, there's, they've identified anything that would be a potential risk. So other things that we will be doing though, we, we will be as part of this application, installing certain markers around the site to where then we will have our surveyor go out and survey those. So we will know if there's any changes in elevation due to settlement or other issues.
All right. So this comes to us for action is on November 12th. That's what we have it currently scheduled for. So if anything else comes up, let us know. We'll get another presentation and, and take action on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have Barton Riley here to talk about proposed rezon on 139 North Wall Avenue. Welcome, Barton.
Thank you.
Hey, this is a request for a zone change on Wall Avenue. It's on Wall Avenue, just north of the Fenway Field subdivision. It's actually part of the Fenway Field subdivision. It's currently an R16 zone and the applicants asked to rezone to an R3 conditional overlay, which would allow two single family dwellings and a parking garage on the property. So on the map here, you see the Fenway Fields Town Home Development. Which is right here. And then this is an additional property. It's just north of the existing town home development. You see, it's kind of long skinny with limited frontage on Wall Avenue. Uh, this is what it looks like. It's just a vacant property. Um, this is the Fenway Fields subdivision that you can see the type of development on it. And this is, there are actually two lots on the property. It's been divided into two. And then R16, each of those could have a single family home on it under the current zoning. The applicant with the Fenway Fields, it felt like the tenants there would like some additional parking in that area. And I think one of the main reasons is you look at the development itself, it fronts Wall Avenue. And there's not parking along Wall Avenue. If that was all available for parking, then I think there'd be abundant, but it just so happens that there isn't parking there. So some of the tenants would like additional parking. You know, there are garages for each unit. Tenants use it for parking or they use it to store stuff and some would like to do both. And so the applicant would like to use this additional property to build another parking garage there for the development that the tenants could use to park vehicles or extra vehicles there.
Barton, at what point does that parking garage become a storage unit? And would a storage unit be in allowed use in that area?
Storage units would not be allowed use. So it would have to be tied to the Fenway Fields development. So they couldn't just rent it out to anybody for use. So.
Will they rent it to tenants in Fenway? So there will be a rental. But they have to be a tenant.
Yes.
In the development.
Yes.
Do we know what it would look like?
Uh, the they've shown just a general sketch of what it could look like on the, the bottom there of just a single story garage with brick. And then two single family homes that would match the style of Fenway Fields. That's just a concept plan.
Do, do you feel like the design that's been submitted and we're looking at, does that match the architecture of the single family homes and/or Fenway Fields as a whole?
Uh, it does match Fenway Fields. Yes. As you see in Fenway Fields. Uh, one of the real intents of Fenway Fields was to make the buildings look not very tall. And so that sloped roof was intended to give them a low profile and a lot of brick on it. And so those things, those features can be added on to the home. You can see the style of the home is really similar to that on Fenway Fields and, and the massing and the, the cladding will be the match that Fenway Fields has the same sort of roof pitch to.
No, I was talking about that garages.
Oh, the garage.
Feel the garages architecturally matching the single families and the I, I know it's a crude, it's just a people drawing, but it looks a lot like a storage unit to me.
Yeah, it. Yeah, it's not the, you know, an award-winning architectural design that you'd be. But it's also in the back of the project there. It would have brick along the bottom that would match the Fenway Field. So it would, that would tie in that design. But yeah, it's, it's a garage.
Okay.
Um, this seems a little deja vu. I was looking through the timeline. Didn't we go through all this once before?
There was at one point a request for a much larger zone change to R3 in this area. Developer wanted to kind of continue the same Fenway Fields onto the, the rest of this property and then applied for zone change and that was not approved.
It was denied.
Yes.
And I thought we'd talked about this very project once before, but.
Uh, this property was part of that previous applicants.
And the reason this is an R3 instead of an R1 with a, I don't know, ancillary use is why, what?
Uh, to match, to allow that, the use for the, the town home, the parking for the town home. Uh, this is all R3 with conditional overlay. It would match the zoning of that with.
So that's going to be a CO2?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's going to be limited to the two single family homes and the parking garage. Then they could do like a little playground or something like that.
Yeah, I was just gonna tell David, he, he's the one that's responsible for making sure that it doesn't get rented out to anybody other than the Fenway Fields. Yeah, that's probably the biggest concern I've got about it is, is who's gonna enforce that? So it doesn't turn into a storage unit.
Yeah, we could add that to the development agreement as.
I don't know how you're gonna do it though. Who's gonna enforce it? You're gonna knock on the doors every year and say, yeah, I just don't know how you enforce it.
Yeah. I, I'm sure it'd be a complaint basis.
Yeah.
Somebody's opening up welding shop in there. You kind of get the idea of that.
Yeah, kind of do.
Or make it an ADU.
And the access though, I, I think we, yeah, it, it's all coming through Fenway Fields, right?
Yes, that was one of the things when they did the develop the subdivision itself. Was to have, instead of having access on the wall, there's no access on the wall. It accesses through Fenway Fields with the driveway through to their driveway. And, uh, and we'd make sure that there's enough room for the garages back there and the two single family homes there. That was, that was one of the conditions of doing that two lot subdivision.
I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of curious also. I don't want to spend a lot of time, but did UDOT require them to have the fence between, you know, along the property line so that people couldn't park on the street? I know it's not, it's not a red zone. It's it's just a street.
Yeah. Uh, no, I don't believe they did. I think it was just part of the site plan.
So if somebody would felt good about hopping the fence, they could go ahead and park there and hop the fence and go over.
I think they could. I don't know that it's, I don't know if it's marked. It's just one of those that nobody parks there and you'd feel very uncomfortable doing it.
Yeah. Well, that's a pretty busy road.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions real quick. I know we're talking about rezoning, but let me, let me ask you a couple of questions. First of all, it doesn't make sense that you're gonna put the I almost said storage units, the garages at the other end, when it, it should be part of the Fenway Fields. And then the two houses, are they, I mean, are they going to keep the parcels? Are they putting the parcels with Fenway Fields? The only reason I say that is because then if you sell Fenway Fields to one developer and the next contractor, whatever, and those other parcels stay and those people can't get to their houses, then, then it becomes a huge issue. So what are they doing with the parcel?
So it is two separate parcels that are part of the Fenway Fields subdivision. Um, so you know, the front one could be sold separately. It is, I believe it's in the homeowners association documents because they had to have access through there. So it's through the, the homeowners association that that would be.
I mean, it just really gets difficult if it, if it's not part of the one big parcel. So, and then I would suggest that if we're doing something in those two houses, that they be for sale products, not rental products. So. But I don't want to just go on. I believe it's part of the homeowners association.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we can follow up on that.
Yeah. I mean, the next thing you know, we're in some sort of legal issue because we've allowed it to be their access and then it gets sold and. But I don't know why, I mean, other than the parcel, one parcel is bigger than the other. I get that, but I don't, I don't know why you would put the garages on way on the other end.
Yeah, house on wall.
Right. And maybe that's not the plan. I mean, maybe that's not the final plan, but I, that just doesn't make sense to me.
So you're thinking put the garages?
On wall. Yeah.
Okay.
And put that with the storage units on the, on wall and the two houses on the other. Closer to the R16 zone. Right. Close and closer to the R16 zone.
Yeah, when you talk to the applicant about that.
It had to be something on the wall side that make it look less industrial and a little bit more like Fenway Fields, but I mean, they did a good job.
Yeah, it's a clue. Yeah.
They could kind of keep that same sort of exterior treatment on that east side.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the root issue is. And it could be, I mean, it could be a variety of things. Sewer water.
Any other questions? Discussion on this? Okay, so this also comes on November 17th for we've got it scheduled for action on that. So, or I mean 12th, did I say 17th? The other 12th, the 12th. So yeah, if we can get some of those questions addressed and talked about, and then we'll have an opportunity to hear from the petitioners with on the 12th and maybe ask, ask directly. So. You're the petitioner. Yeah. Does, does anyone have a specific question they want to ask? But, yeah. So yeah, sure. Welcome. So if you don't mind just saying your name.
My name is Craig Butters and I own the Fenway Fields project. Um, with her questions on the, on moving the storage sheds, they're not storage sheds or garages and and there's only going to be eight, maybe nine. There's, there's thirty units in there. So this is a really small quantity of these. So we're trying to use that back property from those two houses and do something with it besides a field. There's just, it's only sixty-eight feet wide. So it's not wide enough to actually flip the houses around and take a road down it. The houses are actually going to be left and right of the main road going in. So there's only enough room to get under a special use that we had to apply for to get a small building window to build on those lots. Because that had to be approved by the mayor. We went, we spent about a year getting that done, just to get the two lots in there because they are so small with that thin narrow strip that is in there. This piece came with the Fenway Fields when I bought it, but it wasn't part of it. So we had to get it, uh, re bring into the HOA. So it is part of the HOA. These people do pay HOA fees. Um, they have total access to the entire facility and so do the people on the facility back to those two houses. Um, they're going to be the exact same plans as the houses that are already there. So that front line would look exactly the same going down the road. Um, the same architect is designing, doing the houses and he's going to do these garages. Um, the problem that we've had is, uh, these houses have no extra parking at all. They have the driveway and they have the garage. It's like the minimum, minimum requirement of parking. They've got approved for this entire project. So they have nowhere to park. So if they have a, a UTV or they have a trailer or they have anything, there's nowhere to put it. They can park on the road up by the, the north entrance for about thirty or forty feet, but then it's a D cell lane all the way down to the second street turn. So that's what's stopping anyone from parking out there is because that, that is a, a UDOT D cell lane and they, they can't be in that. So I hope that, that helps you with why we can't flip the garages out towards Wall Avenue and it, I don't. it, I don't think it would look that good because you'd have all these nice houses, then you'd have garages lined up and and another problem we had was trying to get a road in that sixty-eight feet. So if you were to try to take it in there and turn it, you wouldn't be able to get a, a big road in there, you know, to to meet your minimum standards and try to build. Um, we haven't done any final drawings on it because we need to make sure we got through all this first before we started. You know, with the CO overlay, we're gonna have to get that all approved anyway, so we're gonna be working on the, the drawings once we get to that phase and then everybody will see exactly what these things are gonna look like. So the renditions are, are they're pretty rough drawings, you know, we're just trying to make use of that property. Um, it would've been nice if in the beginning when Sean, Sean Strong built this thing, he would've maybe took some of these things into in, into his thought process and done that, but like he said, they were planning on developing like forty-eight more around the back and down through the sides and, you know, and and that was all way before me, you know, when I, when I bought it, I just got into a lot of stuff that I didn't know was going on in the background. But now we're just gonna try to make it the best we can, um, make that back so it can stay clean, you know, not weeded up. Uh, there was also a reason them houses are there is because the engineering for the sewer and water is gonna come out of Fenway Fields on that same road, so it's gonna go straight in a stub and then our flow line hits it. If we were to ta- change anything and push them houses back or do anything on there, we're not gonna have the flow to get to the sewer. You know, so there was, there was a lot of thought put into how we had to lay this out to make it actually work. And, um, the citizens, once they understood what we were doing with it, and they know they're just single family homes, we didn't have one person at the, uh, the second meeting, have it, only one person came up to even comment on it because that's what they wanted, they wanted single family homes in there. Um, but they will be a rental. You know, they're not gonna be a for sale home, um, because that's what that entire subdivision is, none of them are for sale, they're all rentals. And, um, I have no plans on selling them, and if they ever were sold, it'd be one complete unit all at once, but they are all under the same HOA. Is there any other questions you had on that?
Jared, I'm looking.
Hey, council member, put your mic on.
Oh, sir.
There we go, thanks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at page thirty-one or page forty, depending on which you're doing them. And I don't see how you're accessing that, that garage area, so.
So this one here, look, this is gonna have to be re-engineered, so what you're looking at is the original engineering stuff. This is the minimum size build area, it can be taken down on this one to that same size. So they were maximizing the building areas to these two lots and this was just gonna be a big field.
Oh.
So what this would do is this would push over to where we have a road right down this side. And this road would now come in and that they'd redo the engineering on this flow line. And then that would still be big enough because that's the building footprint that's gonna go in, it's gonna be a three bedroom home. So that will fit there, another one will fit there.
And still give you like twelve feet to get by.
It probably gives fifteen plus a four foot sidewalk.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, you're looking at the the how, what it was approved to build on, so I could build anything up to that size in that footprint. But we would rather take that down, make the exact same units, make them all match, you know, so that everything works and then we really don't need a highway getting back here because, you know, there's, there's only a few few units, you know, it's, it's not like, like storage sheds, rent them out to everybody in the world. There's only eight or nine be- between thirty tenants, so it's
Yeah.
We haven't done the exact math and measured it all out and figured how many are gonna fit, but that's the space they're going in. Cause I'm sure it's gonna change the deten- detention pond size because we're gonna have more sealed surface and things are gonna change. It might even, might even let be five, I don't know.
Great, thank you, that, that really is helpful, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
All right, okay, council business, we have any discussion I?
To talk about my special, my favorite topic, um, Hope.
Hope, yep.
So, um, it's probably time that we start planning, I actually have been trying to get in touch with the, the travel agency that is on state contract and haven't had much luck this week, so I'm gonna keep trying a little harder. Um, just to get some general guidance from them to determine how you wanna do it, but I think if you're planning to go at a minimum, you should put this on your calendar. Um, the dates that Hanus would, has recommended that we be in Hope is, um, July twenty-ninth through, uh, that's a Tuesday, July twenty-ninth through Sunday, August third. The, that meeting on the twenty-ninth is actually a council meeting for them. Um, where they would, you know, you could meet with, uh, their town twinning advisory board, which is the group that is signed to their sister cities. Um, and then they have some events planned, suggested, there, nothing's obviously set in stone. Um, and then goes through to Sunday, they, he said there's a church service that that is part of their folk fest, um, that they would like, like us to attend. Um, so I was checking out like how long it takes to get to you know, to Hope, and when, when the best travel times would be, and it actually is, with the time change, it's, it's about twenty-four hours. So if you leave at nine AM, you're gonna get there at nine AM the next day. And, um, so that means we'd probably be traveling either the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth, depending on uh, if you wanna throw in an extra. I don't know, visit to some special place before you get to Hope, and then obviously if there's some things that you wanna do after um, we can also make that plan, I guess the biggest question is originally when we had started this to-go plan in twenty-twenty to go we had thought maybe everybody should just make the arrangements. And at that time, we didn't have any administrative staff that were interested in going, so it was just a few council members that were gonna go and be a member or two of staff. But now it seems like we may end up with a bigger group, I know the mayor's interested in going, Mara's talked about going and I don't know who else from the administration, um, might be interested in going, so it might be more, um, financially, uh, beneficial to go as a group if we can get a travel agent to to book some of this as a, as a group tour. We any questions so far, thoughts? Travel.
Janine, if it's a, a group tour, is there still flexibility to either fly in earlier through the travel group or depart after the main group?
Yeah, and I would think so, and that, that's something I wanted to talk to the travel agent about, but I would think that there would be that flexibility. Um, the benefit of doing it all together as well is, once we get over there we're gonna need some transportation options to get from here to there, and if we're traveling as a group on a bus, that might be a lot more uh, make more sense than everybody renting an Uber or trying to take a train or whatever it is. I mean, I know they have a pretty good train system, but I, it's a three hour drive from the air, either Frankfurt or
Munich.
Munich.
Yeah.
But it's an eight hour train ride from there, so you know, it, it's probably best if we can make some arrangements for travel, now when we went in twenty, going in twenty-twenty um, Ryder, who was, who was my contact over there then pick us up, uh, at the airport, whichever we flew into. Um, so, some of that, I suspect that some of the costs are gonna be picked up by Hope, uh, that could be, uh, transportation, it could be some hotel rooms, I'm not sure. Um, we also did discuss in twenty-twenty providing some you know, some per diem amounts from, uh, out of the council's budget. Um, and so we can talk a little bit about then, initially we talked about like fifteen hundred dollars, I did check the US, uh, the state departments per diem for, for, uh, Europe, European travel, it's quite a bit higher than that now, so it if we, you know, it'd be closer to two thousand, I think. If that's, if that's the way you wanted to go, and we did talk about just, just the per diem for the time that you're in Hope and not, not other days that were there. So that's some discussions we had before, um. If you are bringing people with you, um, you know, a partner or kids or whatever, we, we kinda need to know that as soon as possible so that we can get a count and then that will help the agency, um, determine how best to make the arrangements. Uh, I did think about if, you know, if you're bringing five people when we are in Hope and they're covering some of the cost, it might be more reasonable to just count as a plus one or maybe two, um, and instead of having them feed our whole family or whatever, so. Those are some thoughts that I've had, um, I'm sure that there'll be some deadlines for when we need to know for sure if you're going. Um, and payment dates, uh, it's been a long time since I've traveled with a group, but I know that generally that you have some money upfront and then pay some later. Um, what else? I did learn from, uh, the Bennetts who are our contact that travel there. The European Union is, uh, starting to require visas in the spring. So we'll have to make arrangements to get, uh, visas to travel from country to country or to Germany. And so we'll have to figure all that out, I did go on their website that she gave me and it's not live yet, it just said sometime in the spring. So, um, anyway, so again, those are something that I think travel agents could help us with, there's, you know, travel documents. You wanna make sure that your passport's up to date, uh, I think generally speaking, they don't want it to expire within six months of your travel dates, so even if it's outside your travel dates, you should have at least six months on that other end, so check your, check your passports. Um, so I guess, you know, I'm curious what you have to say, if there's some other questions that I can research, who, who thinks they might go? Um, all those things. Yeah, you gonna go? Okay.
I wanna go with Mark though.
Okay.
Well, he speaks German. I almost bought someone's house.
Really? In Selleck City, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm interested, sure.
Yeah. He will either join us later or come with us and he'll stay later.
Yeah, I was kinda looking at the calendar and it looks like at least I'd like to go kinda right after our twenty-fourth stuff and then kinda play a little ahead, ahead of time and then.
So you're not tired by the end, yeah.
Maybe, yeah.
That's, that's, that's what I would think.
Yeah.
Spending my energy. Okay. Um, how, does that sound good to everybody, maybe leave a little, a couple of days earlier, three days earlier, I don't know. Uh, I did, you know, kinda do quick look, so in the, the proposed itinerary that Hannah sent me, um, you know, he mentioned, uh, just going to their downtown and visiting, having a welcome dinner, and then they have a Bavarian museum. Uh, and then a visit to Plowin, um, a visit to the state baths in the Czech Republic with a theater performance with English subtitles, day trip to Coburg or Bamberg. Um, and then I kind of pulled up the map and kinda looked what might be close. Um, so we, we did talk about in twenty-twenty going to Prague, that is about three and a half hour drive. Um, so, almost a day trip, I don't know, we might wanna stay overnight there, um. Uh, Nuremberg's not too far if you're into history, uh, Burt to Skaden is not too far. Um, there's, uh, Regensburg, what's a UNESCO old town site. Uh, Dresden, um, and then Nusht-Bonstein, am I saying that right? No, no Spainstun, that's the Cinderet, Cinderella Castle. Um, so, uh, right now, I was looking, I thought that Delta had a direct flight to Germany, but it doesn't look like they do anymore, there's, they have one stops, like in a, most of them were in Atlanta. So. Okay, well, what about you, Sean?
I would be attentive on that one.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's what I, I thought, make sure that you kinda block out a couple of weeks, maybe a few days before, a few days after, to give us some flexibility so that you're gonna go. Okay. Any questions or anything else that you might wanna know? Sounds like it. What, you mean response? Well, they have yeah, yeah, they have like forty people on their council, the people that came are, uh, the they're this, basically a subcommittee that is this town twinning advisory committee board, I think those are the people that came.
It was a strong group, there were, there was a good number and they brought family with them.
Yeah.
Yeah. The Lord Mayor brought her son and yeah.
So the possibility if, if we're there and you decide to do a side excursion or something and leave the group after you finish I thought that's an option as well?
Yeah, I would think so, um, and maybe, I guess it all depends on what you wanna do, I mean, maybe you don't wanna travel with the group to those sites, you know, maybe by after ten days, you're tired of everybody. Um, but I, I think what we can work out some options and maybe it's just Oh. Right. Yeah, I just, it's like just across the bay, basically, right?
So I think.
Yeah, true.
Probably a lot of that'll just depend on what the travel agency, you know, once, I think a lot of questions could be answered there and help us to navigate flexibility and travel and all that.
And economy, you know, are they gonna be able to help us with some prices?
Uh, right.
Otherwise, you know, if there's minuscule, or just a small difference, it might be easier just for him and I to arrange our own thing and then we're gonna stay late and
Yeah, and, and the one thing I don't know how that would work, let's say if you have miles that you use for your flights. I don't know if they can accommodate that or not, I, it's just been so long since I've traveled in a car.
One thing we talked about when we planned the last time too, not to be grim, is like, should everybody be on the same plane? If the mayor's going to, then that.
You know, somebody else's problem.
I mean, we do have backups.
Do we have backup plans, yeah, we've got documents.
Maybe at least two planes.
Yeah, and they do have, it did look like they had several flights leaving every day, um, so, or at least you know, at different times of the day, so. Okay.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Janine, for bringing it up early, cause it will help all of us do a little planning well in advance of
We wouldn't care.
This arriving right before us, so. Yeah, I think it's gonna be a really exciting trip, and I think fifteen hundred dollars a day is a per diem is great. I'm on the record with.
They're your constituents, not mine.
Not a reason.
All right, okay, we'll be adjourned for now and pick this back up at six o'clock.